Good morning, everyone. This is the matter of a certificate need application filed by the applicant Premier Bariatric Group, P L L C. This is with the Office of Health Strategy. Doc at number twenty-one dash three-two-four-two-five, C O N. The applicant in this matter seeks to establish an outpatient surgical facility under Connecticut General Statute, section nineteen A, six thirty-eight A six. In its application, applicant Premier Bariatric Group, P L L C, states it is doing business as New York Bariatric Group, that it is a owned, single specialty bariatric practice. Applicant gives a brief description of its proposed, of its proposal stating it seeks to establish a licensed, single specialty outpatient surgical facility in Stanford, Connecticut. Applicant states, "The ambulatory surgery center will primarily perform laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy and related tests and procedures in connection with the L S G." The public hearing before the Office of Health Strategies Health Systems Planning Unit is being held today, December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. My name is Joanne V. Yando, Y A N D O W. Victoria Valtree, the Executive Director of the Office of Health Strategy, has designated me to serve as the hearing officer for this matter, to rule on all motions and recommend findings of fact and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. Public Act twenty-one dash two, section one forty-nine, effective July one, two thousand and twenty-one, authorizes an agency to hold a public hearing by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with the Public Act, any person who participates orally in electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state your name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearings, to access this hearing, and silence any additional devices that are around them. The public hearing is held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine A, and will be conducted under provisions of chapter fifty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes. Office of Health Strategy staff is here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application and will be asking the applicant witnesses questions. I'm going to ask each staff person assisting with questions today to identify themselves with their name, spelling of their last name, and their title, and I'll start with Mr. Carney.
Good morning. My name is Brian Carney, E R I A N C A R N E Y. I'm a planning specialist and the Certificate of Need Supervisor at the Office of Health Strategy.
Thank you. And Ms. Rival?
Hello, I'm Jessica Rival. I'm a healthcare analyst with the Office of Health Strategy in its rival, R I V as in Victor, A L.
Thank you. Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being recorded and will be transcribed. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy are available for review through our Certificate of Need portal. In the Certificate of Need, you'll often hear references C O N. The C O N portal is accessible on the Office of Health Strategies C O N webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with section nineteen A, six thirty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. The C O N portal contains the table of record in this case. As of this morning, exhibits were identified from A to Q. Is that correct, Ms. Rival? We go up through Q, I believe is the last one?
Uh, no. Oh.
Oh.
There was a revision, so it's A through zero through O.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, section four dash one seventy-eight, the applicant is hereby noticed that I may take judicial notice of the following documents. The statewide healthcare facility and services plan. Facility and services inventory. O H S acute care hospital discharge database. Hospital reporting system, also known as H R S, financial and utilization data. And all payer claims database, claims data. May also take administrative notice of prior O H S final decisions that may be relevant to this matter. Mr. Carney, are there any additional exhibits to enter into the record at this time?
No, Attorney Yando, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Counsel for the applicant, would you please identify yourself?
Good morning. My name is Joan Feldman. I'm a partner with the law firm Shipman and Goodwin, and I am counsel for Premier Bariatric Group, P L L C.
Thank you. Attorney Feldman, are there any objections to the exhibits in the table of record or the notice documents?
No, there are not.
All identified, identified and marked exhibits are entered as full exhibit. Attorney Feldman, just to clarify, the legal name of the applicant, just so we make sure we have it in the record?
Premier Bariatric Group.
Premier Bariatric Surgery LLC.
Okay, all right. Dr. Garber, I'm going to ask, okay, when you're, I will, you're witnessing the matter, so I know your attorney is going to introduce you soon, and I appreciate your assistance, but I just, at this point, wanted, any kind of legal question, I will direct to counsel Attorney Feldman. So Attorney Feldman, Premier Bariatric Group, P L L C?
Correct, doing this as New York Bariatric Group.
Right, thank you. We will proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. The agenda can be found on the C O N portal. I would like to advise the applicant that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge about your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, completeness responses, and prefiled testimony. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, to enable the use of their video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings. Anyone who is not testifying or commenting shall mute their electronic devices, including your telephones, televisions, and other devices not being used to access the hearing. All participants shall mute their devices and disable their cameras when we go off the record or take the break. Please be advised that the hearing may be recorded during breaks. It is our intention not to record during breaks, but there is a possibility that that could happen. So just want to advise you, if your recording is, if the recording is on, any audio or video not disabled during breaks may be accessible or will be accessible to all participants to this hearing. So I will try to give reminders when we go on breaks, but you will also want to try to remember that. Public comment during the hearing will likely go in the order established by O H S during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or O H S staff will call each individual by name when it is his or her turn to speak. Registration for public comment will take place at two o'clock and is scheduled to start at three. If the technical portion of this hearing has not been completed by two o'clock, public comment may be postponed until the technical portion is complete. If the technical portion is complete before two P M, we will break until three. Applicants witnesses must be available after the public comment, as O H S may have follow-up questions based on the public comment. Mr. Carney, are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues we need to address before we start?
No, no, Attorney Yando, I think we're set. We're all set.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Feldman? Are you, are we all set? Yes, okay, you're on mute, so you just want to, do you have an opening, opening statement?
I have a few comments to make, and thank you for that opportunity. We're very happy to be here today. We have, as you know, waited for some time. We've patiently waited. We're very excited about bringing this proposal to O H S because we think it exemplifies all of the policy directives that O H S has established with respect to offering lower-cost, accessible ambulatory services. As you probably know, the managed care companies, the third-party payers, are all shifting what was essentially only inpatient care to ambulatory settings. This is the first proposed A S C that will offer laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy in Connecticut. It is a minimally invasive procedure. It takes approximately thirty-five to forty minutes. Dr. Garber will go into greater detail and be able to answer all of your questions about the procedure, but it has a very, very minimal complication rate. Patients are on their way again, two hours after the procedure is completed. They don't have to navigate a hospital. There's less exposure to infection. It's a lower-cost procedure to perform it in an A S C by approximately thirty to forty percent less expensive than an inpatient procedure. About eighty percent of the patients will qualify to have this procedure performed in the A S C, basically having been screened using standards for making those types of determinations. And again, I don't want to steal Dr. Garber's thunder, but it really is something that is very much needed in the state of Connecticut. We, it's already being performed in about fourteen other states on an ambulatory basis. Premier has just opened an ambulatory center and will begin performing the procedure very shortly in the next couple of days or weeks in New Jersey. It has negotiated with national payers for this lower rate and has already begun to negotiate in the state of Connecticut. The payers are very excited and encouraged by this opportunity. It's going to be located in Stanford, Connecticut, which is in Fairfield County, where there's twenty-seven percent incidence of morbid obesity. It will be accessible to Connecticut residents and Westchester County and New York, other New York residents. The thing that is so unique about this particular application, and as Brian and Steve and other staff members know, I've been before O H S many, many times. I am leading with the fact that this is a lower-cost procedure and that we welcome Medicaid patients. Twenty-five percent of our patient population is covered by Medicaid. Why is that of interest? Well, when you look at the statistics with respect to morbid obesity, there's a higher incidence of morbid obesity among lower socioeconomic groups, individuals that are Black and Latino. We also know within the last two years that with the COVID- nineteen pandemic, that folks who are morbidly obese are at a higher risk for death as a result of COVID. So it is really an important procedure to perform. Dr. Garber can address how it reduces complications, secondary complications that are often associated with morbid obesity, such as heart disease, diabetes, hypertension, sleep apnea, arthritis, all of those very chronic and disabling diseases. More importantly, in addition to the successful outcomes regarding weight loss, it really makes a very beneficial change in lives of the individuals that undergo the surgery in that they're able to become more functional. They're able to go out into society, work again, travel, et cetera. So we're very excited about this. The surgery center that they're planning to locate was occupied by a prior ambulatory surgery center, actually that was grandfathered in before there was a C O N process for A S Cs. And it's of minimal expense. The only expenses primarily associated with, with equipment to outfit the two O Rs, one that will be used initially and the procedure works. So I will finish, and if you will allow Dr. Garber to provide his testimony, we can, we can begin.
Okay, so I'm saying, so your witnesses lined up today are, I know we have Dr. Garber, anyone else lined up today?
We don't have any other individuals providing testimony, but we have with us the Chief Operating Officer of Premier, which is V J Bakani, and we have the CFO, which is Alan Benson. In the event O H S has any specific questions that are within their area of expertise.
Okay, and before I decide, you know, whether or not to call them, and could you tell me, Attorney Feldman, basically, as far as the COO and the CFO, what their knowledge base is, and if I want more, I'll certainly swear them in and ask them that, but do you, can you tell me what it is that they would have to offer?
Sure. So Mr. Bakani is the Chief Operating Officer, and he will have knowledge regarding the establishment of the organization. He'll have knowledge about the reimbursement of the organization, as will Dr. Garber, and staffing issues and just operational issues and business issues. Mr. Benson will be able to address any questions you have with respect to the financial attachment fee regarding our projections and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And Dr. Sean Garber is the, the only witness that filed prefiled testimony, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Dr. Garber, could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give commencing this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, and could you state and spell your name, please?
Sean, S H A W N, Garber, G A R, E R.
Okay, and what is your title regarding the applicant?
I am the founder and president of Premier Bariatric Surgery, P L L C.
Okay, so Dr. Garber, I just wanted to make you aware. So Doc, Attorney Feldman gave us a nice, a nice outline about what the evidence is going to show, but, but your attorney's statements aren't evidence. Evidence has to come from witnesses and from documents. So she stepped forth a path, hopefully on what kind of information we're going to get today from the witnesses. You know, your testimony is going to be helpful, any kind of documentation. If it's already been submitted, you know, please refer to that, anything that will back up any kind of statement you have. Any documents that you have that haven't been submitted, we may seek late files, or if you believe there's something there that, that we haven't identified, I mean, certainly bring that to our attention. And we will certainly take a break at, you know, some point, too, and you can always, you know, come back to me during this hearing today to tell me other documents you think might be relevant that, that we should consider. Okay, so now you did file a prefiled testimony. Do you adopt the written testimony you submitted, and that's been filed on the C O N portal?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and is and is that information true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, so we have this, I mean, we may also have some public viewing in to get information. I mean, your document is on the portal. It's now a full exhibit. You've taken an oath that this is, is true, but so you can certainly tell me what's in there, certainly expand if you need to, and it refers to any other documents that are in the record that you think that are helpful and support what you have to state. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Garber.
First, I want to thank Attorney Yando and the rest of the staff for having me today and looking at our application. Like Mrs. Feldman said, we're very enthusiastic about this, and we think it's a great opportunity for us to provide care to the residents of Connecticut and increase access to care, which is always been very, very important to myself in our practice. A little background about New York Bariatric Group, we're the largest bariatric surgery practice in the country. We have over twenty-four bariatric surgeons now, more than what we originally had in our application. We've been growing since the application was submitted. We have a comprehensive support structure in place in our practice, which I think is very important for our application to show that we do very comprehensive workups and evaluations of all of our patients prior to undergoing any kind of surgery. So we employ our own cardiologists, pulmonologists, nutritionists, psychologists, as well as anesthesiologists. The bariatric patient population is very unique in that they have a lot of comorbidities and medical problems like diabetes, sleep apnea, hypertension. Anesthesiologists need to be specialty-trained to take care of bariatric surgery patients, and that's why we employ our own. We do a very comprehensive workup on all of our patients. So all of our patients, before undergoing any kind of surgery, will see all of these different specialists of cardiology and pulmonary nutrition and psychology, and if they find anything out of the ordinary in this patient population, obviously, they would take care of it. If they do a cardiac workup and they're having chest pain, we'll send them to have their heart checked prior to undergoing surgery. If they have psychological issues that we think they won't perform well after surgery, we'll have to go counseling and correct those issues prior to surgery. So we do a very thorough evaluation of everybody, and that's been what we've been doing for, since I started my practice many years ago. We also set up and run over seven M B S A Q I P Center of Excellence programs at different hospitals throughout New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut.
Hey, Dr. Garber, I'm just going to ask, I don't know if, so I am not a doctor, and I, and I'm not, some of the acronyms you use, may, maybe everyone but me knows what they mean. But I know, like Attorney Feldman was talking about A S C, Ambulatory Surgery Center. Can we agree that A S C is an ambulatory surgery center?
Yes, yes, I will elaborate more on those, that, those acronyms for you.
Okay, yeah, so just, just be mindful, you know, those of us taking in consideration, I mean, my job as the hearing officer is to apply the law to the facts. Okay, so I am not a medical person, so anything you assume might be not, you know, it will be helpful for me when you use that, at least the first time, tell me what it means.
Sure. So M B S A Q I P is a program to do Centers of Excellence for Bariatric Surgery. It was set up by the American College of Surgeons and the American Society of Metabolic and Bariatric Surgeons. Together, they formed this M B S A Q I P, which what they do is, is they certify hospitals to be Centers of Excellence, and how they do that is, is we have to have lots of special procedures and policies in place at each hospital, proper equipment, proper training of all the staff. We have, need to have an independent data collector that goes and enters data into a centralized database nationally of all of our complication rates, procedures, everything gets entered by an independent person, and we get benchmarked against other programs around the country every quarter. We get a report from M B S A Q I P. So it's a Center of Excellence program that's naturally recognized by the American College of Surgeons and the American Society of Metabolic and Bariatric Surgeons. And all the hospitals that we work at, we've achieved that status. And we, me or one of my surgeons, has set up and run each one of those programs. Our goal here with this surgery center that we're setting up is they do, M B S A Q I P, the Center of Excellence program, does have defined criteria for ambulatory surgery centers performing bariatric surgery. So our plan is, number one, is to follow all of the strict rules, policies, and criteria when setting up our program there, as well as achieving Center of Excellence by that accreditation within a year of opening up the center. We participate with all the major insurance companies. That's another important thing. So there's a lot of bariatric surgeons, I know, in the Northeast that are out of network with insurance plans. We are a fully a hundred percent in-network model, and we do participate with every insurance, as well as we accept Medicare and Medicaid patients. We, New York, we do all the managed Medicaid plans. Connecticut, there's only one Medicaid, Husky. And in Connecticut, it's a very large portion of our patient population is the Husky Medicaid. So about twenty-five to thirty percent of our patients that we treat currently do take Medicaid. And we look at that as charity care in that our reimbursement is quite low and that we pretty much lose money on every patient that we take care of with Medicaid. We lose money. Second, it's a reimbursement as compared to what we pay our surgeons. But it's very important to us as an organization is to treat all patients and really help the community, because obesity, as everyone knows, is a huge epidemic in the U S and growing every single day. There's always news articles. It affects lots of different medical problems that patients get, like diabetes, high blood pressure, sleep apnea, joint disease, a high degree of depression in morbidly obese patients. And like my attorney mentioned earlier, it disproportionately affects the lower socioeconomic classes and Black and Latino communities.
I just want to just touch base, and I don't mean to interrupt, but just, that was one of the things that you stated, and I know that there was a link in, in documents that you filed. So when I clicked on that link, I didn't find the information about the Black community and the Hispanic community. So maybe Attorney Feldman, if you could check that link, and I just want to make sure that information is there based on the, the population that you say it affects. I did, I did go through documents, I clicked on links, I clicked on the footnote link. I know that the links in the prefiled testimony, I couldn't get on those through the links, but I could get on through the links through the, through the application. So if that was something I did want to follow up on, but maybe Attorney Feldman on a break or something can take a look to see where that information is and refer us later. Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Garber, go ahead.
No, no problem at all. So I want to give a little background. What is laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy? Because like you said, a lot of people here might not be aware of what that is. It's the most commonly performed procedure right now for weight loss in the United States. So over the years, there's been evolutions of different procedures. Many years ago, many, many people might have heard of some called gastrectomy. Many years ago, maybe many people might have heard of some called gastric bypass surgery. Then there was lap band surgery. Sleeve gastrectomy has been around for quite some time, probably for over fifteen, sixteen years. And it's now is the number one most common surgery being performed in the United States for weight loss. What laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy is, it's a minimally invasive procedure done laparoscopically through five little tiny incisions, about a quarter of an inch each. We put a camera inside the abdomen, and we watch what we're doing on a TV screen. And then we staple and remove about seventy percent of the patient's stomach and pull it out through the belly button. And we make the stomach into a long, thin tube like a sleeve. A lot of people think that you put a sleeve in, really what we do is we change the shape of the stomach into looking like a sleeve. So it becomes a long, thin tube. And this has been shown to be very effective in helping people lose a large majority of their excess weight. So so the surgery is extremely successful. The long-term success rate of sleeve gastrectomy is the majority of patients will lose about eighty percent of their excess weight within one to two years after surgery. The long term, yeah.
Okay, so and and that's, so going back just to step back when you're talking about what the surgery entails, but just give me a little more detail. I mean, as far as you bring in an anesthesiologist, the patient is, I mean, I, you know, just, I I need to be spoon fed, you know, what is the procedure?
So no, no problem at all. So the patients undergo their extensive workup in our office prior to surgery where they see all those different specialists, which I mentioned earlier, they come in, they get pre-emission testing, we could do pre-op blood work on them. They come in, they have undergone extensive education prior to surgery. We document all the risks, benefits, alternatives, obtain specific consent, specific for the procedure. They come in, they'll meet with an anesthesiologist that will evaluate the patient. The patient would be brought in to the operating room. They will undergo general anesthesia, so they do get a breathing tube inserted. The nice thing about some of the newer technology in many years ago, twenty years ago, when I first started doing bariatric surgery, sometimes it would be difficult to put a breathing tube in an obese patient because they have very thick necks, it'd be hard to get the breathing tube in. Now there's great technology, something called the Glide Scope, which is actually a camera where they put in the back of the throat and under direct visualization, they can easily put those tubes in nowadays, and obviously, we would have those at the center. So really, the risk of putting patient obese patients to sleep is very, very minimal nowadays with the new technology that we have. Once they're asleep, we prep and drape their abdomens, and then we make five little tiny holes, like I said, a quarter to a half inch each. We put little tubes inside the belly, and we put a camera in the belly, and we have TV screens that we're watching what we do. And then through those other four tubes, we insert instruments where we staple and divide the stomach. We have a special device that does three rows of staples on each side of the stomach and then cuts the middle. And we staple and divide the stomach after placing a tube in the mouth, so we know it's the proper size. We then take that piece of stomach and we pull it out through the belly button. And that's pretty much the end of the procedure. And usually it takes, I I've done these in twenty, twenty-five minutes. Some surgeons at thirty-five, forty minutes, but it's a relatively quick procedure. After the procedure, they're, the anesthesiologist wakes them up, they take the breathing tube out, they go to the recovery room, usually within within an hour, we'll get them out of bed, get them start walking. And they should be able to go home within about two hours would be the average length of stay of how long they'd be in the center. You're muted.
Is it moderate or deep sedation?
It's general anesthesia, so it's deep sedation. It's general anesthesia, so it's deep, it's completely general anesthesia, so that's as deep as anesthesia can be.
Okay, thank you.
So why do we think that we should approve laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy in a surgery center? We think it's a much more cost-effective option as opposed to right now, all the surgeries we do in the state of Connecticut are done in the hospitals as an inpatient basis. The amount of reimbursement that the hospitals are getting paid by payers is much higher than what we are going to be able to do it for in the surgery center. So like mentioned earlier, we have already established a surgery center in New Jersey, in Paramus, New Jersey. We took ownership of, it was an existing A S C that we took over the license. And we took over about four months ago. I've been aggressively negotiating with all the major payers in New Jersey, and as of last week, we've completed a hundred percent of the payers we do have agreements with to perform laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy in the surgery center at approximately a thirty to forty percent reduction of what they were paying the hospitals. So the insurance companies are extremely excited about being able to move the patients from the inpatient to the A S C setting. I have begun discussions with, in Connecticut, with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have a meeting set up next week to start discussing rates, being hopeful that we get approval for A S C. The other payers are old national payers like United, Cigna, Aetna, which we have agreements with, which also are big payers within Connecticut. So we're pretty confident that we get the same exact agreements we have in those, with those major payers in in Connecticut as well. As far as Medicaid, which I know is a big part of the application, so currently CMS with this centers for, I'm not sure what CMS stands for, it's Medicare. So CMS does not have a reimbursement rate for sleeve gastrectomy in the A S C setting. Therefore, Medicaid, and specifically Husky Medicaid, does not have any rates set to perform sleeve gastrectomy in the A S C setting. So right off the bat, we're not able to do Medicaid patients in the surgery center. But I have reached out to Bradley Richards many times. I've sent a lot of documentation that we sent to your office about the benefits and safety of of sleeve gastrectomy in A S C. And he's generally supportive of the concept, but he is in the process of doing a fiscal analysis for that. So I've had many communications with him on that, and the hope is that they will approve it with the rate that we'll start doing in the A S C. We also are committed to doing five percent charity care for patients. So patients that have no insurance can't afford it, or they're going to do very reduced rates based on financial need, or even offer free surgery to patients in the community, because we do believe that this is an epidemic. And there's many, most private practices do not take Medicaid patients into their in in into their office, but we have and continue to. We think that, like I said earlier, that's about thirty percent savings over inpatient. Another example of why this is needed is self-pay rates. So we see a small percentage of patients that self-pay for surgery. The rates for the hospitals in Connecticut are higher than New York and New Jersey. So most currently, most of our patients that do self-pay, we they end up having their surgery done in New York or New Jersey because it's lower self-pay rates. So the the prices in Connecticut are much higher. And by offering an A S C, we will, we control the rates, we're going to be able to offer a much more affordable solution for patients without insurance to be able to have the procedure done. There was an article that we submitted with our application of in SWORD, which is a surgery for obesity and related diseases that was published in two thousand and eighteen, where they looked at three thousand one hundred and sixty-two patients from nine different ambulatory surgery centers, and they showed that laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy in an A S C setting is safe with low complication rates. When thinking about what is this equivalent to to procedures you already approve in a surgery center, it's very similar to approval for a gallbladder. So laparoscopic cholecystectomy or removal of a gallbladder, which is the organ attached to the liver, is now routinely being done as ambulatory in surgery centers. And the risk of that is very similar to the risk of a sleeve gastrectomy. So we don't think there's any really added risk. We think we can bring eighty percent of our patients that currently are done in the hospital to the ambulatory surgery setting. There will still be about twenty percent of the patients that would be too high risk with severe sleep apnea or heart disease that will still need to be done in a hospital setting. So we're not going to be moving a hundred percent of our cases to the ambulatory surgery center. We're estimating, and it's it's a little bit of a guess, but looking at our data, we think it's pretty accurate, about eighty percent of our patients into the surgery center. So like I had mentioned earlier, and one of our other exhibits is the M B S A Q I P, which you mentioned earlier, which is the society, which is the the organization from the American College of Surgeons and and American Society of Metabolic and Bariatric Surgeons. They do have a set criteria, which we have submitted with our application, the M B S A Q I P criteria to achieve Center of Excellence. And there is a section one point two, which talks about low acuity patient and procedure selection. So in there has very specific defined criteria of which patients should be done safely, that can be done safely in a surgery center. And it's based on B M I. B M I is Body Mass Index. It's a ratio of height to weight. So if you're taller, you need to weigh more to have a higher B M I. So the criteria we use in general for surgery is a body mass index of thirty-five, which is or with any medical problem related to obesity, like diabetes, hypertension, or sleep apnea, or a B M I or body miss it, Body Mass Index of forty or greater with no medical problems qualifies for surgery. And those are the criterias that's been around forever. That's the criteria all the insurance companies use to approve bariatric surgery. And those are the criteria that we follow as well. The M B S A Q I P one point two low acuity patient procedure selection does limit the B M Is and age criteria of who could be done safely in the surgery center, and they recommend ages of eight to sixty-five. Males with a B M I less than fifty-five and females with a B M I less than sixty. And the reason the difference between males and females, a lot of people probably aren't aware, but males and females carry their fat very differently. Males typically carry most of their fat in the central part of their abdomen and body. Men are more typically have more medical problems like diabetes. It's a much more unhealthy way to carry weight. Where females, we call them as pear shaped, more often carry a lot of the fat and weight in their buttocks and thighs and lower body, and their abdomens are smaller. They usually have less medical problems, and it's easier to do the surgery on a female than a male because there's less fat around their organs, believe it or not. So the B M I criteria is definitely a little bit higher for females versus males. And then they can't have any organ failure, they can't have an organ transplant, and no significant cardiac or pulmonary disease. And like I said, all our patients are undergoing cardiac and pulmonary workups prior to surgery. So we plan on following this criteria exactly because we want to, we want to apply to achieve M B S A Q I P Center of Excellence at our center. There is a section, I think it's page, section, section eight point one in the M B S A Q I P is where they I'm sorry, I think it's actually eight point two, is where they define the criteria for performing bariatric surgery, specifically staple procedures, which is laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy in an ambulatory surgery center. So you can reference that for these criteria. Like I said, these criteria is set up by the American College of Surgeons and the American Society of Metabolic and Bariatric Surgeons.
And what document was that again, please?
It's the M B S A Q I P center, it's M B S A Q I P Criteria Handbook.
Is that attached to the application, or is that where?
It is, it is within the application. It might have been submitted in one of the follow-up questionnaires, but it definitely was submitted to you. And if not, we can get you another copy of it, but I'm I'm pretty confident you have a copy of that somewhere.
Okay, we'll take, we'll, we'll certainly look at the whole record.
Okay. So like, like earlier was said, laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy is currently in fourteen different states in the U.S. It's in Ohio, Nevada, California, Texas, Georgia, Washington State, Arizona, Kansas, Indiana, Illinois, Delaware, Oregon, as well as New Jersey. With the New Jersey A S C, we plan to starting January one is we're going to start doing our first sleeve gastrectomy in the A S C. We have not done it yet, and we've been waiting to negotiate the payer contracts, which took a little bit longer than we had expected. But like I said, they're all completed, and we're starting January one. So a little bit about the target population, which was mentioned earlier. Obesity is on the rise. It's a major epidemic in the U.S. In Connecticut, twenty-nine percent of the population is obese, and in Fairfield County, twenty-seven percent is obese. Another point which we think is important, which everyone's been everyone's radars lately is COVID. There is a much higher risk of death from COVID and being hospitalized for the morbidly obese patients. We saw it all over the news when COVID epidemic hit. There was good data published by NYU that a good percentage of the patients that get hospitalized are morbidly obese, and it's much higher risk. So we think that bringing patients to a low acuity place like an A S C, patients will feel a lot more comfortable. So we got a lot of pushback after, once COVID hit, we were all shut down for a couple of months, havoc everywhere. I'm sure you guys had plenty of havoc yourselves. And we, since then, we have patients that's not so scared. They don't want to go to the hospital for surgery. They're like, there's COVID there, I don't want to go there. And we know that's affected lots of different things. People with cancer are dying, we're seeing epidemics everywhere in all different types of medicine that people aren't going for their routine colonoscopies and breast imaging. So we know that because of COVID, everyone put their health on hold. And we think that offering this lower acuity place where patients can come and not be part of a hospital, they'll be much more apt to have surgery. Right now, in the United States, we only operate on one percent of the patient population that qualify for bariatric surgery. So a lot of his awareness, a lot of people are scared of surgery, but we at the New York Bariatric Group do a really good job of educating patients. We do offer free seminars to patients regularly at all the different hospitals. We do online seminars now that we're doing right here. So we really believe in educating the community about this. Obesity leads to all these medical problems and costs the government and insurance companies hundreds of millions of dollars a year related to all the comorbidities. Type two diabetes, which is adult onset diabetes, is almost always related to obesity. Sleep apnea, almost always related to obesity. Those medical problems go away when we do surgery on these patients. So we cured that type two diabetes, we cure sleep apnea, we we cure high blood pressure. We cure all these different medical problems by doing this procedure. So it really is a life-changing procedure for patients to reduce their comorbidities and increase their lifespan. So we know that morbidly obese patients die maybe seven, eight years earlier than non-morbidly obese patients. As far as cost savings, like I said, from the rates that we have negotiated, from what, we don't know definitively what hospitals get. I I kind of have a general understanding of what hospitals get from the facility fees, that our rates are about thirty to forty percent less than what the hospitals are getting paid. In conclusion, I'd like to say, I thank you all for considering the application. We really think that this is a great service that we can provide to the community for patients in need that can't attain this necessary surgery that's life-changing, decreases medical issues, decrease the general cost of medical care overall to the state, as well as to the insurance companies. And we think that by offering this lower cost alternative will increase access to care, and we will just help make the community healthier.
Hey, thank you. Um, I know O H S staff has some questions for you, but I have some first, and you'll I may chime in with some of their questions, but sort of on the top of my head, and I think you've gone through the nineteen A six thirty-nine criteria, because I see in your test in your written testimony here, you sort of try to break it down in some of the pieces, and and one of the the parts of the law that we have to look at is whether there is a clear public need for the healthcare facility or service proposed by the applicant. So I know you've given me a lot of general information, so I'd like to focus it on Connecticut. I mean, how, I'll now file some more questions, but let me just sort of put this out and and let me, you know, I'm I'm interested. How many Connecticut patients do you work, do you deal with now? Why do you think if you do this, you're going to get some patients in the in this in the center? I know you've talked about the COVID, and but I don't know what kind of numbers we're talking about. I mean, how many patients do you now do this this procedure on in hospitals? What hospitals do you do them in? Why doing this? Why can't? Is the change just about saving money, or or is, can you not get to all your patients because you can't get, you know, time in the hospitals? I don't know. I don't know what the need is specific to Connecticut. So if you could sort of explain a little bit more about what the the clear need is in Connecticut and the area you're looking, you know, to to start this facility.
So so currently, we we perform all of our surgeries at St. Vincent's Hospital in Bridgeport, as well as St. Francis Hospital in Hartford, are the two hospitals where we perform all of our surgeries. In two thousand and twenty, we took care of four hundred and thirty-nine Connecticut Medicaid patients. In twenty twenty, we took care of four hundred and thirty nine Connecticut Medicaid patients. Overall, in the practice, we are doing approximately about forty five hundred bariatric surgeries a year. In Connecticut, separately, we have to, I have to get that data. I don't have that offhand to be honest with you.
Okay, that, those are numbers we're going to need. We're going to need a breakdown. So if we could have a late filed exhibit and I'll, I'll certainly let Jessica or Brian certainly with their.
I, I just want to, they're, they are all in the application, those number.
Those numbers are breakdown by state?
In, in the state of Connecticut, with respect to the need and Fairfield County, all of that information is, is in the application. We did not provide data on other states.
So, so some of it, I can read a little bit from the application. Where in, based, this is based on two thousand and nineteen data as far as what qualifies. In Fairfield County alone, there's about a hundred and ninety eight thousand patients that are obese, about twenty seven percent of the population. Of those, one percent will choose bariatric surgery, which is around nineteen hundred eighty two patients. So we, we estimated in about two thousand five hundred and forty two prospective patients. That's what is in our application in that area. As far as what we're currently doing, uh, moving around if you don't mind, pull up quickly the actual number of cases. Okay, we can get you the actual number of cases that we've done. But we're doing probably, I'm averaging, I'm, I'm guessing, we'll pull up actual, actual data. We'll get you right now about. Alan or Vijay, do you have that?
Probably about forty cases a month.
Okay, and I'm going to swear, Mr. Mr. Is it Bachani? Am I pronouncing it correctly? Is it Bachani Bachani?
Yes, correct. The name, my name is Vijay Bachani. I'm the chief operating officer at Premier.
Okay, Mr. Bachani, could I, could I have you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, and please state, spell your name for the record and if you could also state your title.
Sure. Name is, first name is Vijay, V I J A Y. Last name is Bachani, B A C H A N I. And my title is Chief Operating Officer.
Um, so do you have any information that Dr. Garber was just addressing?
Yes, if you give me a minute, I'm actually looking it up right now.
And while you're doing that, I'm Mr. Benson. Can I, could I have you unmute yourself for a second? Thank you. Mr. Benson, could you raise your right hand, please? Uh, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, thank, could you please spell your name and give your title for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Alan Benson. That's A L A N, Bism Boy E N S O N. I'm Chief Financial Officer.
Okay, thank you. So there's no pending question to you right now, Mr. Benson, but I just, in case one comes, I just thought we'd get that. Get that out of the way.
In the, in the meantime, I could talk about as far as what I think the advantages of why moving to ASC that you asked earlier on. I think that a couple of things. I think one is, I think patients will be more apt to have surgery based that they can go home this day, same day and haven't done it.
I have a question. I, I'm, I just, Leslie, am I the only one? I somehow Mr. Garber's testimony sometimes gets a little staticky.
It's, I think it's Mrs. Feldman's when she's off mute is when it happens.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was my speaker or if it's, so that's, okay, so you're getting that also. But, okay, so, so Dr. Garber will certainly stop you if, if your testimony isn't clear. I just didn't know if that was on my end or, or your end.
Sure. So, so a few things is, one is, I think that by offering an alternative setting versus a hospital, I think number one, a lot of patients are scared to be in a hospital, they're scared to spend a night in the hospital. They're increasingly scared because of COVID, of what's going on in the world right now. So I think those are reasons why patients will prefer and probably be more apt to have surgery in an ambulatory setting. Patients don't like to spend a night in the hospital. Patients are scared of hospitals. We know that in general. Second is, I think that the lower cost alternative is a big part of it. So right now, if it's done in a hospital setting, the costs are much, much higher. So if they have copays and coinsurances and have to pay a portion of that bill, it might be unaffordable for patients. And by bringing it to a lower cost setting, they'll have lower coinsurances, lower deductibles. I think also the fact that we're going to offer five percent charity care. So there's no hospital I can bring, if someone has no insurance, I won't be done in any of these hospitals that I work at. They're not letting me do it for free. But we're willing to do that to serve the community. So I think a combination of those factors will increase the availability that more patients will choose to have surgery because it'll be more cost effective as well as they feel more comfortable being in an ambulatory center with less infection, less risk for COVID, as well as not being in a hospital.
Mr. Bachani, you look like you have some.
Yes, I, I, I have some updated numbers for you. So in the state of Connecticut, in the trailing twelve months, we did with the two hospitals, so St. Francis, St. St. Vincent's, I have five hundred forty bariatric surgeries that we did.
And note, of notice, our volume has been growing by approximately twenty to thirty percent year over year. We just hired a fourth full-time bariatric surgeon for the state of Connecticut. So we've had three. We have, have a fourth one that's going to be starting very shortly. So we are growing by twenty, thirty percent year over year.
Okay, and as I say, I will have more questions as we go along, but I know that OHS staff has, has some prepared questions for you. Mr. Carney, do you want to go ahead and start?
Sure, Attorney Ando, let me just pull up my questions. Okay, Brian Carney from OHS. So first couple of questions sort of relate to sort of generally clear public need and volumes. So I'm looking at page twenty one of the prefile. It provides a volume, volume breaking and finds broken down by service type. In addition to bariatric LSG, there will be general surgery, endoscopies, and plastic surgery. Can you please discuss these other services that you plan to provide and how they relate to the bariatric LSG? Are they directly related or?
Sure. So as far as endoscopy, so all of our patients are required to have a preoperative endoscopy prior undergoing a sleeve gastrectomy. The reason being is we need to know their stomach anatomy. So we need to see if they have a hiatal hernia where the stomach gets slit up into the chest. If they have any tumors in the stomach, any ulcers in the stomach. So we do a full evaluation of everyone with a preoperative endoscopy. Also intraoperatively, so at the end of the sleeve gastrectomy during the actual surgery, we always do an endoscopy at the end of the surgery where we put a scope down, we look inside the sleeve. We make sure it looks good as well as we inflate air and we put water around the stomach. We look for air bubbles, kind of like a tar leak, to make sure everything looks good before we leave the operating room. And then postoperatively, some patients postoperatively might get reflux or they might have issues and we might do a postoperative endoscopy on the patient. So we do a very large number of endoscopies. I think Vijay can maybe pull some data of how many endoscopies we do a year, but we do thousands and thousands of endoscopies every year. As far as general surgery, so the obese patient population, postoperatively, they could develop gallbladder issues. So there is a connection with rapid weight loss to develop gallstones. And some of those patients might need the gallbladder removed laparoscopically. So laparoscopic colectomy would be one of the more common general surgery cases we might do as well as hernia repairs. So people that are morbidly obese, there's, we, we make these little wounds. There's a lot more tension on those wounds and the risk for developing a postoperative hernia in one of those wounds is higher than the general population that's not obese. So we will also probably be doing hernia operations. Those are probably the two most common type of general surgery cases, which are commonly be done in ASCs now that we'd be doing in our current patient population. As far as plastic surgery, we had one plastic surgeon. We just hired three more plastic surgeons. One that's full-time for Connecticut that just started recently. So patients that lose a large amount of excess weight commonly develop intertrigo, which is a rash underneath the hanging skin folds of the abdomen. And insurance companies, believe it or not, they do approve it as a medically necessary procedure, a paniclectomy, which is removing the excess skin of the abdomen. So that's very commonly done in our patient population as well as patients will want cosmetic things. Patients will have trupi breasts, want breast lifts. Patients will want arms, they have hanging skin to arms and want to move their thigh lifts. So these are, it's very, very common that our patient population will end up with plastic surgery, probably a minimum of fifty percent of our patient population after rapid weight loss will want some kind of plastic surgery to remove their excess skin. Some of those procedures are medically necessary procedures that are covered by insurance like a paniclectomy. And that's the plastic surgery portion that we're talking about. So these are all related to the same patient population we're talking about.
Thank you, Dr. Barber. On, moving on, so page twenty one of the prefile states that the projected outpatient volume is based on the applicant's actual inpatient LSG volumes within the state, within the target service area appropriate for shifting to an ASC setting. I think mentioned something like seventeen percent. So I believe you said that the hospitals, you only, right now are currently performing bariatric surgery at two hospitals would be St. Vincent's and St. Francis?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Which hospital is used to determine the outpatient volume at the proposed ASC in Stanford?
I think we use both hospitals' volumes combined to determine that, the, the volume. So we took the total volume we're currently doing and we assuming about eighty percent of it could be done in an ASC setting and twenty percent would stay in the hospitals.
All right, so basically eighty percent, you're, you're calculating eighty percent of the volume at St. Vincent's and St. Francis could be formed at the proposed ASC. Okay.
Correct.
What's the seventeen percent you were talking about? How, how did you determine that seventeen threshold for inclusion? Is that based on, of the population? You mentioned the seventeen percent.
Twenty, twenty seven percent of the patient population in Fairfield is considered obese. I don't know if that, what you're referring, twenty seven percent?
Uh, I think it's on page twenty one of the prefile. Page twenty one on the prefile says outpatient volume is based on applicant's actual inpatient LSG volumes within the target service area appropriate for shifting to an ASC set, approximately seventeen percent of the population in the target service area eligible for LSG plus anticipated growth of twenty percent. So two paragraphs below your, your volume table on page twenty one.
Brian, would you please let us know what the table is that you're referring to?
Yeah, the seventy percent comes from a paragraph below the table. The table is, is the projections.
I, I, I found, I found it.
Page twenty one. To the issues.
So it's seventeen percent of the primary service area. So we're saying that there's two thousand five hundred and forty two prospective patients in Westchester and Fairfield.
Yep.
And if we operated on seventeen percent of them, it's four hundred and twenty five cases is how we did that calculation.
Okay, and what does, what does the seventeen percent represent, doctor? How did you determine like seventeen percent of the population would be eligible, I guess?
Well, I think, I think we used, we, we took what we, we asked at the time when we did the application, I think we were doing about four hundred and twenty five case, cases a year. So we took four hundred and twenty five cases a year and divided by the two thousand five hundred and forty two to get the seventeen percent. So now it's actually probably higher because as Vijay said in our trailing twelve months, we've done like five hundred and eighty something cases. So the numbers are actually higher than what the application was. This was a year ago.
Okay. I'm still looking at that table. So the, the volumes in the table appear to be both surgical cases and procedures and appears that individual patients, you know, would receive like the bariatric surgery plus they'd receive at least two endoscopies, multiple services. So what, what I'm looking for is what, what would be the projection of unduplicated patients in that table? So you had totals of two thousand sixteen, twenty four, nineteen, twenty nine oh three, same page. What are we talking about as far as actual patient, unduplicated patient volume?
Well, I, I, I would say, not looking at that numbers, just based on current numbers, I'd say eighty percent of the five hundred of, we'll figure we're close to six hundred cases, eighty percent of that, about four hundred eighty unique patients. I'd estimate eighty percent of what are combined is the trailing twelve months.
Okay, um, I would like to ask for a late file related to that, Attorney Feldman. I'd, I'd like to have those projections presented by unduplicated patients and sort of a description too as to how they arrived at.
And there'll probably be several late filed exhibits and we will go over them at the end of the hearing. Attorney Feldman, you'll probably want to keep an ongoing list. I know Ms. Rival will be keeping an ongoing list and I'll issue an order at the end of the hearing about when these are due. So I will ask you, and I'm sure on a break, you can quote with your client regarding how long it would take to come up with this information.
May I just ask for clarification from Mr. Carney right now?
Yes.
So, Mr. Carney, in the application itself, we projected very conservatively the volume of cases that we would see in Fairfield County based on the statistics of individuals with obesity in Fairfield County. Okay? And then in, in follow-up, I believe there are completeness questions, correct? We're, we're referring to that chart regarding the seventeen percent. I believe that was raised in a completeness response. Oh no, it was in the pre-hearing. I'm sorry. It was in the pre-hearing issues. Again, that number was a conservative low number. So you're asking for us to determine the volume of unduplicated procedures. We have the number of patients that are going to have LSG. All those other procedures are associated with those patients. You're asking us to clarify what? I'm, I'm a little confused.
So you have a volume, projected volume table with a total of two thousand and sixteen, two thousand four hundred and nineteen, two thousand nine hundred and three. So what you're saying is that the number of patients will correspond to just bariatric LSG?
Right. They, those are unique patients and the other procedures are associated with those four hundred and twenty five patients. There might be some people, perhaps Dr. Barber, who are, you know, maybe have endoscopy and you decide not to do the surgery on them. But most part, those procedures that follow, these are not people that are coming in off the street for plastic surgery. People that are coming in to have an upper GI. These are people that are having procedures performed at the surgery center in connection with the LSG procedure that it, it's usually post-op or post LSG.
Right, so that, that's really still not giving me the answer. But I really want you to, to give me the duplicated number of patients because the four twenty five is for bariatric, then you're saying you're doing a difficult procedure for plastic surgery that may come after the initial bariatric LSG. That still would be a legitimate unduplicated patient. So I'd like to see a better, a better estimate with a total of unduplicated patients for those three years and also for you to revise the payer mix to, to reflect that same total of unduplicated patients.
Yeah, because my question with that chart, so I'm looking at it. So if it's as Dr. Garber, and my question goes to Dr. Garber. Four hundred and twenty LSGs, but there's one thousand two hundred and seventy-three endoscopies. So are you saying there's like, you know, eight hundred, whatever the math is, the of people that you say we're not going to do it? Is that what you're, what you're saying?
No, so there's, there's patients that get multiple endoscopies. There are, there's going to be patients that we operated on three years ago that before we even had an ASC, they're going to come in for endoscopies because they're having issues postoperatively. Some people have Barrett's esophagus, we have to screen them every year with an endoscopy. So there's medical reasons why people might need to do endoscopies yearly after surgery and it could be patients that were never operated on an ASC. We based our endoscopy numbers all based on the current endoscopy volume that we're doing currently. And being able to move all of that, a hundred percent of that to the ASC. There's no reason a hundred, a hundred percent of our endoscopy volume can be moved to the ASC. So the endoscopy estimates are based on what are we currently doing? We're looking at twenty, thirty percent growth. And that's how we calculated our projected endoscopies. As far as the, if you look at table E, we estimated that in twenty twenty-two, we're going to do seven hundred and forty-three bariatric cases. And in twenty twenty-three, we're going to do about nine hundred and no, eight hundred, like lower nine hundred cases and then twenty twenty-four doing lower a thousand bariatric cases. And that's by taking our current volume and then, and then, and then adding the twenty, thirty percent volume. And you can see based on the way our volume has grown from the initial application to now, we should, we should be able to achieve that seven hundred and forty-three by twenty twenty-two would be my guess. We'd probably do that. So I think our, our numbers were based on historical volumes that we're doing and estimating with our twenty, thirty percent growth, which we've historically done over the past five years, we looked at, and that's how we got our numbers.
So in twenty twenty-one, the, the current year, and I know we're a couple of weeks away from the end, but how many endoscopies in Connecticut? Just give me a ballpark. I don't know if it's in there because I have a question.
Yeah, they have to pull, I, I wouldn't know that offhand, but Vijay can probably pull that out.
Okay, so let's, let's say, let's just say, you know, I, I'm just making a hypothetical here. Say, let's say you do a thousand, you did a thousand endoscopies. Were those all done in either Saint Vincent's or Saint Francis?
Yes, or done in our endoscopy, we have an endoscopy suite in Westchester as well.
New York?
Yes.
Since July, we've done three hundred and thirteen endoscopies in Connecticut.
Three hundred and thirteen in Connecticut?
Since July, so that's, is this July?
Yes, July twenty-one.
So you're, so say, say that you double it. Let's just do the ballpark of six hundred. I'm not saying that's the number. But say you did six hundred in Connecticut. How do you get to doubling that for twenty twenty-two?
I think at, at, because as your patient volume grows by twenty-three percent, the endoscopy business is going to grow higher than the inserted volume because every patient needs, every patient is guaranteed to need two endoscopies. They need a pre-op endoscopy and they need one during the sleeve gastrectomy. And then there's a certain percentage that will need post-op endoscopies. If everything's straightforward, they have no history of any issues. We usually have one year post-op, we recommend an endoscopy to check the sleeve to see how everything is. So that, that, there's three endoscopies on the average patient. Then you have patients that have real issues that might need it more often. People can get a strict cure and might need to have it, have endoscopies to check it every month for three months in a row. People might get an ulcer and they might need a repeat endoscopies. So, but on the average patient will probably get about three endoscopies within the year of the surgery. So they'll get one pre-op. They'll get one intra-op and then a year post-op, we do a screening endoscopy on all patients. So each patient gets about three endoscopies.
The ones that go to Westchester, are they the Bridgeport patients? I mean, just going to Saint Francis to Westchester is quite a distance.
So, so currently we do a one-day workup process where the patient comes in one day, they see cardiology, pulmonary nutrition, psychology, have an endoscopy all in one day. So we make it the workup process very easy. We currently do not do that or offer that in Connecticut at the moment. So patients are willing to drive to our Westchester location to do a workup of one day because the convenience of taking one day off from work and they have the whole workup completed. As opposed to in Connecticut having to go to six different doctors in six different days. We do plan on at, adjacent to the surgery center in Stanford, we have a Janing office space that we have a lease signed on. We are planning on moving that one-day workup to Stanford right next to the ASC. So they're going to come in one day, do the cardiology, pulmonary nutrition site, and then they're going to go in the ASC and have the endoscopy. So all those patients currently going to Westchester are going to be done in Stanford once we get the ASC.
Okay, Brian, I don't know if my questions were helpful or, or not, or they just, but I, I'm sorry, you can go ahead.
Yes, no, they're fine. And I, I'm not saying like these numbers aren't valid, but I, I really want to take a look at actual patients being served. And I see endoscopies are a little bit different. Their procedure compared to the surgeries is a little bit more detailed. And I'd like to, like to have a look at a little tightened up the projections based on unduplicated patients.
Yeah, I think, I think we could definitely, we could do that for you. I don't think it'll be a problem. We can look at the number of surgeries predict, which are all unique bariatric surgeries. And then we can look at how many patients we estimate will have other procedures that didn't have the bariatric and add those on to get the number of unique patients. I think we, we can, we can figure that out for you and we'll, we'll submit something.
Okay, that'd be great. And then something related, which, you know, when you talked about your procedures done on an inpatient basis of the two hospitals. And I don't think you probably, well, I'd like it in writing anyways, even if you knew the number, but I'd like to have, you provide the three historical years of volume for each hospital, Saint Vincent's and Saint Francis, where you're performing bariatric surgery on an inpatient basis. So I would, you know, I would, I would give us, you know, the different category, service categories that you've included there as well, just so we have an idea of volumes, because that's where, you know, you're basing your projected volumes at your proposed facility.
Yeah, so, so sorry to interrupt you. So the projected volume is that plus right now, all of our Westchester patients are being done in Westchester. And we think and be done as inpatient, New York Presbyterian Hudson Valley Hospital in Westchester. We think it, Stanford is pretty close to Westchester and we think a good percentage of those patients are going to be wanting to come to the ambulatory surgery center in Stanford. So it's also, we're going to be moving a volume of that patient. So we can, if you want, we can give you the volume that we're doing in Westchester as well. And I think there will be a small volume from Manhattan also that might come, but that'll probably be a small volume that we predicted.
So absolutely, doctor. Yeah. So anything used in, in coming up with your projections that you can provide, you know, as evidence as to where that volume would be coming from, that would be gratefully helpful, you know, regardless of, you know, the state because the volume is based on, as you said, you know, volume from New York as well.
Yeah, so Dr. Garber, so anything, anything we're asking for, I mean, the burden is yours. You bring the application. So we only have what you give us. So, you know, these are analysts that, you know, work on these numbers and, you know, need to look at and projecting, you have to fill the criteria in nineteen A six thirty-nine. So any information you can give us is certainly going to be to your benefit when we're analyzing the application. If these questions are being asked, it's because there are questions about the numbers. So with these follow-ups, but again, you know, the, the burden is yours. We're not digging up the information. You're giving us the information.
No, no, no problem at all. I think that's, that's very easy data for us to provide. But that's, that's what we got to our number is basically a certain percentage of Westchester, we think that will come there, a certain percentage of Manhattan, a lower percentage that will come there. We looked at eighty percent of being able to move to outpatient and then and we fact all those numbers is where we got our numbers. So we will give you the breakdown exactly how we calculate those numbers with actual numbers from each of those hospitals.
Yeah, you, you'll, so you want to do that and you want to back it up with any kind of information. I mean, because with a, you know, it, it's, we can't just have a, y'all build it and they will come kind of, you know, that doesn't fit the criteria. We, we need the evidence, the numbers, the information that's going to support any kind of finding that's going to be recommended to the executive director. Okay, so that's, that's why we're asking. So it's not just bringing up the numbers, but how did you get there? What information do you have that got you to those numbers? That's what's helpful for us.
Hearing officer, Yando, I, I just want to reemphasize, and I know this is not testimony, but in my role as healthcare council for many of the health systems in the state, I'm negotiating managed care agreements and the managed care peers do not want procedures performed on an inpatient basis. So what we presented in this application, that theme is running on a parallel track. Our projections are very conservative projections. And you'll see even in our financial profile, we did not include Medicare and Medicaid. We believe that Medicare will by twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, the latest, remove this procedure from inpatient only and recommend that it be performed on a ambulatory basis. We know that that is the direction that the Department of Social Services is considering right now with respect, with respect to its population because it will save them a lot of money. None of that was included in our, in our projections. Because it won't be paid for right now, but that is volume that we will have. What we did was look at the statistics and there are citations to all of this data in the application, including earlier you had mentioned, you could not find the data support for the impact on the minority population. There are three sites in the application that have that. Two in the executive summary, it's the CDC site and the NHI site and also there's a chart in the application itself. It looks like this and it's from the Connecticut Data Haven. And that chart specifically talks about the impact on black and Latino population in Connecticut. So I, I just wanted to sort of, I understand that you, I, I, I expect these numbers to be much higher when we go back and we shift the volumes from the hospital and we shift the volumes from Westchester. And I, I think the other thing about New York bariatric group, so that you can understand is that they have, they are premier. They are it in Fairfield County in terms of doing, they are the go-to surgeons for this type of procedure. They also have a very aggressive marketing arm and they do have, most of their business comes from self-referral. Patients bring themselves to the practice and get evaluated for the procedure. I'll shut up now, but I just wanted to.
I mean, Attorney Feldman, I appreciate your advocacy. I, you know, I can see you're working hard for your client. But my job as the hearing officer is to make sure any kind of proposed finding I make is supported by the facts. So, and I appreciate all you have to say, but my instructions to the analyst and the way I look at it is anything the attorney says is not evidence. So it's going to have to be supported by the evidence. I certainly take your argument and I certainly respect that you're giving the lead. You know, I, I want you to certainly tell your witnesses where they should be going and Dr. Garber's doing a fine job, you know, letting us know the information here. But that's where I want to get my evidence and I appreciate that you've done this for many years. You and I have, I've not, but my job is to look at the evidence. So that's, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I understand that absolutely. And nothing I said today is not already in the application. So.
And I appreciate that.
This, one other piece of data that I just got is that, so in Westchester, we, trailing twelve months, are targeting to almost four hundred and fifty bariatric cases there. So you combine that with the five hundred and eighty-eight that we did in Connecticut, you have over a thousand cases. We did eighty percent of it, it's about eight hundred. It is what I would estimate right now based on trailing twelve-month data. And as far as endoscopies in Westchester, our endoscopy suite there, we do, we're probably going to do about twelve hundred endoscopies in that endoscopy suite in the trailing twelve months. So we have that data, plus we have the, the, the endoscopies in Connecticut. We'll, we'll get everything more formally like you wanted. We'll, we'll get you the actual hard numbers from each hospital and what percentage we're estimated are going to come there of unique patients that you want. We'll, we'll get that data.
Okay, yeah, one further thing with that too, with, with the, the inpatient volumes. I, I'd like to also see those volumes broken up by gender, age group, race, ethnicity.
Gender?
Gender, age group, race and ethnicity.
I, I assume we have race and ethnicity in our EMR record, but we're, we're going to double check if we have. There's a chance we might not have accurate data in that because I don't know if every patient reports that. But we can do our, do our best to report that the best that we have in our database.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm moving on to access to services. Page twenty of the prefile testimony states that there is strong interest, this is a quote, Connecticut Medicaid to cover LSG in an ambulatory outpatient setting. However, after I reviewed this letter, Dr. Richards of DSS provided, he states that it's only the initial step of the process that he cannot predict whether the proposal will ultimately be implemented. That the letter does not constitute the agency's endorsement or support of this proposal. So given the letter's full response, how do you characterize that there is strong interest from Connecticut Medicaid to cover LSG in an outpatient setting?
So I have emailed correspondence from him saying that he, quote unquote, he's generally supportive of the concept. But he needs to do a full fiscal analysis. So I, and we've had multiple correspondences back and forth, me presenting data to him. And he's been very receptive to it and, and graciously responding right away to all of my email correspondence with him. So that was our perception based on the terminology he used, that he is generally supportive of the concept. We found that as optimistic, but obviously it means nothing unless they do a fiscal analysis of what, what it means financially to them. So it, it, it is an unknown and we don't know. And like my attorney said, we did not include any Medicaid patients in our projections. We assume, we did very conservative, all the numbers we forecast was based on non-Medicaid and non-Medicare patients.
Okay, Dr. Garber, did DSS provide you with any additional insight on the timing of their review? And completing it?
They have, they have not. They, they did say that they, they planned on reviewing at their next meeting, but I'm not sure when that is.
Okay. And finally, on this, this topic, Dr. Garber, do you know of any other states where Medicaid covers outpatient bariatric surgery?
I do not know offhand, to be honest with you. I think in general, I think majority of ASCs around the country are, do not have no interest in even doing Medicaid. I don't think they even try to. They're very, they're, they're for profit, a lot of them are out of network businesses. We're a different business model. So I'm not, I'm not sure offhand, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right, I'm moving on to the subject of related to quality. So the question was, are you currently performing outpatient bariatric surgery in any outpatient facilities? And I guess my understanding from your earlier statements was that you, you have one in New Jersey. It's, it's close, but you, you haven't done any yet. Is, is that the case?
That is correct. We plan on starting right after the new year. We're gearing up to start. We just completed all the insurance payer contracts. Was holding it up.
Okay, so, so you start new, the beginning of the year, you're saying, January, you think?
Some, sometime in January, we're hoping to start, yes.
Okay. All right. So there would be any, no data or anything to provide from that facility at this point in time. Okay. Yeah. All right, on page five of the prefile testimony, Dr. Garber, you state that the literature is replete with peer-reviewed articles that conclude that ambulatory surgery centers present minimal risk of complications and mortality when performing LSG on appropriately screened candidates. Please elaborate on who, who basically of your patient population would be eligible for LSG on an outpatient basis.
So we, we think eighty percent, we estimate eighty percent of our patient population based on using, like I mentioned earlier, the MBSA QIP section one point two criteria of who should be done in an ASC setting. So we plan on following those criteria exactly, which is age, within eighteen, less than sixty-five. We're estimating about eighty percent of our patients fall into that category that would qualify.
And what, what are the comorbid conditions that specifically require inpatient care?
Sure, so um, severe sleep apnea uh, would probably one that we would do in the hospital. Any history of organ failure, if patient has kidney failure, uh, significant cardiac disease, significant pulmonary disease, um, and then the heart BMI. So male BMI greater than fifty-five. Female BMI greater than sixty. Um, we're not gonna do anyone under eighteen, um, and anyone has to be less than sixty-five years old. Um, so those are pretty much the, the reasons why we would exclude patients based on those criteria I just mentioned. Or if anything came up during the workup process.
Okay, um, so you spoke already about the screening process pretty, pretty thoroughly and um, how typically how you would exclude certain patients, um. Can you quantify the current complication and mortality rates linked to performing LSG in an outpatient setting as, as their their data? I think you gave us one study, but.
Yeah, but the, the larger study was uh, in uh, surgery for obesity and related diseases from two thousand and eighteen where they studied three thousand one hundred and sixty-two outpatient sleeve gastrectomies uh, at nine different centers. And they had, um, I'll tell you the exact numbers. They had a zero percent mortality, which is what we have on an inpatient basis as well. Um, and the short-term complication rate was two point five percent.
And that would include certain things like infection or?
Yeah, so the type, yeah, so the most, the different complications that we look for in this patient population would be they can develop a leak after a sleeve where that staple line leaks. That's probably one of the more serious things that we worry about, but they're usually easily treated if identified promptly. Uh, of note, most leaks don't happen when they're even in the hospice and inpatient. Usually they happen three, four, seven days later anyway. So whether it's inpatient or outpatient, it's not gonna change um, how a leak gets handled at all. Um, bleeding is probably one of the more immediate things that we worry about. And we do plan on doing hemoglobin hematocrit levels at the center prior to sending them home to make sure there's no bleeding and obviously follow their vital signs. Um, and then longer term things we worry about, wound infections, wound hernias, um, things like that. And then you worry about the general uh, issues with any surgery. A patient could die from any surgery. They can have a heart attack. They can have pulmonary problems. Uh, and that's where we're gonna thoroughly screen all of our patients pre-operatively, which we do now even on the inpatient basis.
Okay, thank you, doctor. Um. Uh, please discuss any adverse events experienced performing bariatric surgery in any of the Connecticut hospitals that you're at, or at your other bariatric surgical centers. Um, and, and further like, have you, have you had any disciplinary actions imposed from any regulatory bodies, you know, related to your um, surgeries?
We, we have not had any disciplinary actions. Um, we've had complications. Uh, if you do forty-five hundred bariatric cases a year, you're gonna see complications. Um, like I said, the most common things would be a, a leak would be the most common thing, but it's still pretty rare. It happens in less than one percent of patients. Um, and most of those are even treated non-operatively. Uh, we have a GI, interventional GI doctor to sometimes just put a stent in uh, where they bypass the leak with like a tube, so it heals by itself. So sometimes this require operations.
Um, so doctor, do you track those type of things? Is that something you report on? Could you, could you provide us with some information that would show that it's one percent of your patients, something to that effect?
So, so we have, so each hospital, we have data from each hospital separately. Um, on the happy, so like I said, we're part of MBSA QIP. So there's an independent data collector that collects all complication data, submits it to the database. And then they report off of that and they benchmark our hospital against other hospitals in the country every quarter. More than happy to get you copies of those reports from the Connecticut hospitals of our, it's called a SARS report, S A R S. I'm not sure what that stands for. Um, but we can definitely provide, um, we can get access to that from the Connecticut hospitals, assuming that they'll be willing to provide it to us and, and give you a copy of our SARS reports. Um, of note, there are a couple of other surgeons not related to us that do work at those hospitals. So their data will be part of the report. It's not unique to our practice. But we do the vast majority of the cases at both of those hospitals. Uh, so it'll be relatively accurate reflecting our specific complication rates.
All right, thank you, doctor. Yes, that would, that would be very appreciated if you could provide that information for us. And that is the last of my questions. I'm going to pass it along to my colleague, uh, Ms. Ms. Rival.
Okay, I think we're gonna just, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. Um, it's eleven thirty-seven, so if we could come back, let's say at eleven fifty. So if everyone could um, mute um, themselves during this and we'll all come back on at eleven fifty. All right, thank you. We'll see you then. Thank you. Um, Brian, you just had a few follow-ups?
Yes, thank you, attorney. Yeah, just, just a couple of follow-up questions. Um, first one is for, uh, Dr. Garber. Um, you talked about maybe opening the, the surgery center in New Jersey in January. Doctor, do you have any like patients already scheduled for those January procedures yet? Or is it too soon for that even?
Uh, it's just, we actually had a meeting with my New Jersey surgeons actually last evening uh, to start putting in place all the proper procedures and protocols. And uh, they asked me the same, that question, they wanna book them. I, but we, we need to get equipment and you know, uh, supply chain issues right now. So I said before maybe let's make sure we're gonna have all the equipment in time. So we're trying to get all the equipment ordered in the next week. Um, so I said, let me see if we get all the equipment at time. We can then, as far as insurance companies that were good for by January, it's a matter of, uh, we're not sure about the equipment yet that's gonna be in place. So we'll wait to hear back from all the manufacturers.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And the second question is just a little bit of curiosity, but you guys have a lot of volume in New York, New York State. Um, did you consider, have you tried or considered establishing an outpatient surgical facility in New York? Has, and is, you know, why, I guess, why Connecticut, not New York per se?
Um, so ma- New York, we, we, we definitely are interested and we are exploring opportunities in New York. Uh, Connecticut, we found this ASC that was fully built out, the most beautiful ASC you'll ever see. Uh, so it was just an opportunity that came upon us that we wanted to take advantage of. Um, and that's why that happened quicker uh, than New York. But we do plan on looking to get one in, in New York and Long Island specifically, which is our, where I originally started, which I mean home-based. Uh, we plan on hopefully getting, doing something in the future.
All right, all right. Thank you very much, Dr. Garber. I'm gonna pass it along to Ms. Rivals who continue along with the question. Thank you very much.
Hello, this is Jessica Rival. Page twenty-one of the prefile states that you will seek metabolic and bariatric surgery accreditation and quality program center distinction status within the first year of opening. How does the accreditation process work?
Sure, so one of the good things is one of my partners, Dr. Engst, that is a surveyor for MBSA QIP. So he's one of the guys that does the surveys. Uh, so we're in-house expert. Um, but we've done it already at seven different institutions. Uh, so you need to set specific procedures and policies that they require must be in place at the center. We need to have the proper equipment and proper training of all the staff um, as well. And then we need to do a certain number of volume of cases. Uh, I, I think for the low acuity, which is what this is, I think you need twenty-five stapled cases, uh, which is sleeve gastrectomy. So if you do a minimum of twenty-five cases before we apply. Once you apply, um, they'll give you a provisional approval based on the application. And then at that point, you need to start submitting data. So that's when we hire an independent data um, person to collect data and the data is collected from natural surgery center as well as the follow-up care. They actually track with that data as well. So they have full access to our EMR, electronic medical record. Um, and um, they um, then will come to do an onsite survey. I think temporarily right now, they might be doing virtual surveys like this. Um, but traditionally they would do an onsite survey where they would walk around the facility. They'd ask questions of the staff to make sure they're trained, know how to take care of mobile obese patients, as well as make sure we have the proper equipment. That all the, the, the beds and the stretchers, everything's rated for the proper weights, our toilets have the proper toilet supports. Uh, you can't have a wall-mounted toilet because there's danger of that breaking off the wall. So we have to make sure that they have all the proper uh, facilities and all the proper protocols and procedures need to be all be documented.
Okay, are you currently accredited at the New Jersey outpatient facility?
Not yet, because we haven't started doing any uh, surgery there yet. So we need to do at least twenty-five cases, but we do plan on applying for that one as well. Um, as soon as we have the proper volume in place.
Okay, now after you do the twenty-five cases necessar- necessary um, to apply, is there a yearly minimum that you need to achieve as far as volume requirements for safety and quality?
Yeah, it's a minimum quality number. Uh, for the hospitals, I'm, I think, I'm not, it, it's, it's the reaccreditations every three years. Um, and the volume I think is, uh, for the hospitals, I know it's fifty cases per year. Um, but for the ASCs, it might be twenty-five cases per year. I'm not sure exactly of that required number. Um, but we should far exceed either one of those numbers. I'm not worried. We'll, we'll exceed those numbers anyway.
Okay. And the guidelines that you included with the application, um, I believe they were to the two thousand sixteen standards manual. Are those the current guidelines?
Those were at the time of when we submit our application, those were the most updated guidelines that they had available on their website. Um, but they do, every so often will add certain, certain things and remove different guidelines. Um, but as of the time of the application, we, I can look and see if anything's changed since then. Um, but the, the, when application was submitted, this was the most updated guidelines that we pulled right from their website.
Okay, um, attorney, and I'd like to ask for that as a late file, um, if there are updates to the standards um, that we receive a copy.
Okay, we'll, we'll add that to the list. Um, Dr. Garber, do you need um, any more specifics on that request?
No, that is not a problem. Well, I'll go on the website and see if anything's changed since this addition of it. And if they are, we'll print them out and submit them. It's not a problem.
Great, thank you. Have you had any preliminary discussions with the Department of Public Health regarding performing LSG in an outpatient surgical facility in Connecticut?
We have not.
Okay. And it appears that you've reached out to Greenwich Hospital to establish a transfer agreement for an emergency. Um, why was this hospital chosen, given that there's other hospitals that are closer in proximity?
Um, uh, Laura had a relationship with somebody that is there. We, we knew somebody to get the agreement. Um, but we're open to other transfer agreements as well. Um, that, that, that shouldn't be a problem.
Can I, can I add to that? So the previous owner had a transfer agreement with Greenwich Hospital. And so it was very easy to, you know, just continue that to, to have that transfer agreement with Greenwich Hospital.
Is it in the application? How many miles from where this uh, the proposed center is to, to each hospital? Is that, is that in the application? Okay, can you, can you tell me, um, Mr. Pajani or, or, or Dr. Garber, how far is it? Um. I think what I, what I'd like to know, I, my concern is if there is an emergency. Um, so let me start with this first. Have you had occasions? Well, I guess you haven't done these in an, in an outpatient, right? There's always been in the hospital. Um, so.
Yeah. So as far as immediate emergencies in the immediate post-operative period, um, we, we've probably seen a handful over the years of doing over four thousand cases a year. Um, but it's not significant, uh, no significant numbers. Most of the complications are something uh, like probably the most urgent complication we would see that would need to be addressed immediately would be bleeding post-operatively. Um, and that we would probably bring them right back to our own operating room because we wouldn't wanna wait time to transfer them. So we bring them right back in our own operating room and address it. Um, other things that we worry, I mean, if they had some cardiac or pulmonary issues post-operatively, they thought they need to go to the hospital. Um, but uh, there's nothing I can think of offhand other than bleeding that would need like immediate transfer um, right away. And that would most likely be handled at our own facility. Just because you wouldn't wanna wait with some bleeding, we'd have all the equipment at our facility in case of an emergency bleeding to address.
Okay, if you could just, uh, because I know you have an, an agreement there, if you could, um, as a late file. Um, I don't know, the, the, the printouts from MapQuest, I don't know if anybody uses MapQuest or any, or any kind of information that would show where you're, how many miles um, and travel time from the facility to each of the surrounding hospitals, which I guess you have, you have um, the agreement with, with, um, with Greenwich, is that right?
Yes.
Greenwich, you have, um, Stanford is nearby. Um, what other hospitals? Danbury nearby there?
I, I'm not, I'm not from Connecticut. I'm from New York, but uh, definitely Stanford Hospital is nearby, Greenwich is nearby. I think those are probably the two closest. Um, but we'll, we'll, we can get to the mileage um, on that. It's not a problem.
Okay, and maybe, um, Jessica and Brian, you know the hospitals better than I do as far, are there any hospital, other hospitals in that area?
Not that I can think of.
No, not that I'm aware of. Same Vincent's is probably somewhere around there, but not that close, I don't think.
What about Norwalk? There's no one nearby there. I don't have a Connecticut map in front of me. I'm just, I don't get down to that end, down, down that way very often, but, um. So if you could
Yeah.
If you could just include that, that, any hospitals within, um, say a thirty-mile radius. I don't, I don't, um, I think Norwalk would probably be within that.
Yes, probably Norwalk.
Stanford, um, and
Stanford.
Greenwich, and, and we're in St. Vincent's in Bridgeport.
Yeah, that's
That's good, okay.
It's a little farther away.
So, so I just, I think we just need to know if there were an emergency, what are we talking about? Travel time and distance-wise? Um, you know, on the, with an ambulance.
Sure, I, I, I think Stanford Hospital is super close, i- is my guess. Um, but I'll, I'll check. We, and we have privileges, uh, certain, doctors have privileges at Stanford Hospital as well. Um, we don't do any volume there, but we have privileges there.
Okay, and you may or may not know this, um, I mean, do you know whether or not the ambulance services around there have bariatric ambulances?
I do not know, but I will say that, um, it's probably not necessary. Um, the, our average patient, so everyone thinks mobile obesity, you're gonna see like a six-hundred-pound life you see on TV. Our average patient is a five-foot-four female that weighs two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty pounds. Um, which these ambulances are taking these type of patients all the time. Um, so we're not gonna be operating on five, six-hundred-pound patients. We probably never operate them in general. And if we did, we would definitely wouldn't operate on them in the ASC. Those would be done in a hospital anyway. So I think the patient population that will be operating on ASC in general would, would fit into any ambulance. I don't think you need any specialized ambulances for this patient population.
Thank you.
The next question I have is in regards to cost to the patient. Uh, page six of the prefile, Dr. Garber states that Premier dot, dot, dot believes that providing LSG in an outpatient setting will be thirty percent less expensive than if performed in an inpatient setting. How did you determine that the cost would be thirty percent less expensive?
Sure, so those thirty percent is, is I determine as the facility fee cost savings, not a patient cost savings. Um, so I know approximately, um, I don't know accurate numbers, uh, because obviously it's all confidential. It's, people, hospitals don't share those numbers, but through the grapevine, I have a general idea of what hospital is gonna reimburse and what I've negotiated with the payers already. And it's about a thirty percent savings. Um, so obviously, none of these payers in New Jersey would have made a contract with me, paying me what they're paying hospital, they're gonna want a savings, uh, and that, and that's why they did the deal. So it's about a thirty percent savings. Um, some cases, it might even be a forty percent savings over what they're paying the hospitals on the facility fee side. And then that can trigger trickle down as far as coinsurance. It's obviously, if it's thirty percent more, their coinsurance would probably be about thirty percent higher is, but it depends, uh, the maximum out of pocket stuff.
Okay, do you have any evidence to support this?
Um, I have evidence of what my agreements I've negotiated in New Jersey, which I'm confident that I can get. But we cannot disclose that because they are, all insurance contracts are confidential, we're not allowed to share those numbers. Um, so I, I couldn't, I don't think I can hand those over to my contracts, but we do have uh, contracts with the payers. Um, on the hospital side, I do not have any direct evidence. All I have is conversations with different administrators or hospitals of what they get paid.
Uh, doctor, just a follow-up, uh, this is Brian Carney. Um, could you give us some kind of a blended rate as opposed to like an average show of the commercial payers as opposed to?
Sure, yeah, so I, I'd say the hospitals on average are getting between fifteen and twenty-five thousand dollars um, for the facility fee. Uh, I think majority of the pay is between, pay between eighteen um, for the facility fee. Uh, I think majority of the pay is between, pay between eighteen and, um, eighteen and twenty thousand, and our negotiating contracts on average is probably around twelve thousand dollars is what we've negotiated.
So doctor, could you provide that to us in writing, something similar to what you said?
Uh, sure, I have no problem providing, but, but, but remember the hospital portion is, I, I, I don't want to testify to something that's a hundred percent accurate. This is all hearsay to other people. So to put it in writing, I, I'll, I'll, I'll make it clear from my understanding, that's what the rates are, but I don't have any factual data on that part. On our side of what we negotiate in New Jersey, that, those are facts. Uh, I, I have no problem to attending to those numbers.
That's great, and maybe, uh, if we can use the, uh, Williams data book to support the other side of it potentially, but from our perspective, you know, it's great, and, and it's, it's, you're, you're obviously, you know, know your stuff, but however, we need to sort of have some kind of evidence that the thirty percent is actual, you know, a factual kind of thing, so. Um, but give us what you can provide, that would be great.
Okay, sure, no problem. I mean, just the fact that they're, they negotiated rates with me, you know they're definitely paying us less than they're paying hospital. They wouldn't do it otherwise.
Okay. Pages six and seven of the pre-file testimony of Dr. Garber states, "Some third-party payers have already begun to require that LSG be performed in an outpatient surgical facility." I'm sorry?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, that's just.
Oh, I, I thought there was a question. Um, "Have already begun to require that LSG be performed in an outpatient surgical facility because it's significantly less expensive, unless there are documented medical reasons as to why the procedure must be performed in an inpatient setting." Could you identify these payers?
So I have one payer that's definitive is High, Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, they're based in Pennsylvania, but they, we do get plenty of patients we see up here in the tri-state area that have Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. So they have an official policies on their website. I think my counsel maybe provided it with my pre-file testimony, uh, from their website showing, uh, that they do require all sleeve gastrectomies are only approved as an outpatient basis. Um, and while I have, I, I've called, I've spoken to medical director, and they're pretty absolute, they will, they will not, unless there's a medical issue, um, that requires them, uh, to stay overnight, uh, they want all of them to be done as outpatients. Uh, so, and we're starting to see some other insurance companies occasional self-funded plans saying that on occasion, but Highmark is one that's official across all Highmark, Highmark patients only being approved as outpatients now. And we think that's the trend that's going to move forward, um, probably nationally in the near future. So part of this is staying ahead of that curve to offer that option.
Great. Um, what commercial payers will you establish, establish contracts with at your proposed Connecticut outpatient surgical facility?
So, um, like I mentioned earlier, so United Healthcare, um, Aetna, Cigna, those, all three of those already have negotiator rates for New Jersey, and, uh, you, most of them deal on a state-by-state basis as different people you negotiate the contracts with. But actually, United just moved their negotiations nationally, so I'm guaranteed that wherever I, the rate I have in New Jersey will be in Connecticut because it's a national, um, contract, uh, for ASCs. Uh, the other ones are local, so I'll have to deal with my local Cigna, uh, rep and my local Aetna rep, and I'm pretty confident I'll get at least what I got in New Jersey. Uh, it's, it's hard to get anything less. And then, um, in Connecticut's Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, which I think I said earlier, I have, uh, we have a meeting set up next week, uh, with our ASC negotiating team to start those negotiations. Um, and those are pretty much all the payers that we really see besides Husky Medicaid, which we're hopeful that, um, they will approve that eventually in the near future.
Okay, and it's my understanding, um, in the testimony that you gave previously, that these will all be in-network providers?
Yep, so we're, we're a hundred percent in-network model, be correct, which is unique to most bariatric surgeons. Definitely in New York, majority of the private practice bariatric surgeons roll out of networks, so we're one of the few practices that we believe in a hundred percent in-network model.
Great. Um, on page twenty-three of the pre-file, it states that you expect Medicare to cover LSG in an ASC by twenty twenty-four. Can you just give us a reason why that date was selected?
So there, there, the CMS, um, has plans to slowly over, over the next couple of years to move patients, move different CPT codes, which are the codes that we use for billing, um, from inpatient to outpatient. Um, and it, it's a guess, um, we don't know that for sure. Um, so we're, we're guessing that by then that would happen. Um, but it's kind of irrelevant because our patient population really don't have Medicare anywhere. So we're not operating on people over sixty-five in our ASC. Um, so it's really not relevant to our application, the Medicare population, it's more the Medicaid population that's relevant.
Great. And could you identify what other states LSG in an ASC is covered by Medicaid?
Uh, that was asked earlier, and I was not aware of that, uh, data at all. Um, so I'm not sure of that, um, if it is or it isn't on any of those states.
Is there any way you could obtain that information?
Um.
I believe it's in the application. I will find the page.
No, uh, we have in the application which states perform, um, surgery in ASC, but we don't know which ones actually do it on Medicaid patients. Um, well, I, I, I can try, but I, I couldn't promise that. Every state has different insurance companies, different managed Medicaid's, and I know, I know New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut climate pretty well. Um, actually, I, uh, we are going to start talks now with, um, NJ Health, which is in New Jersey. So they're part of Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield, which we developed a bundled rate with. So Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield is paying us one set fee, includes all the post-operative care, nutrition care, and the surgery anesthesia, we did a bundle. Um, so they are going to be introducing me now to their NJ Health team to look to negotiate a team, so they are open to it, uh, definitely in New Jersey, I know for a fact. Um, but other states, I don't, it'll be hard for me really to know because I'm not even sure. Every state's very, very different with Medicaid, like Connecticut only has Husky. New York, we have ten different Medicaid plans. Um, and New York, obviously, no one's tried to do it because no one's doing bariatric surgery in ASC in New York right now.
Okay, thank you. And my final question has to do with the demonstration of financial feasibility for the proposal. Could you please discuss the overall financial feasibility of the proposal?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk briefly, and then Alan, our CFO, can maybe jump in, but we, we use very conservative numbers when we did our estimates. Um, based on what our costs are, our staffing needs are going to be, as well as what the reimbursement. And the interesting thing in the model we built, I think we put twelve thousand as our estimate, and that was a total guess before we had any contracts, and I achieved that as, as probably our average, um, between twelve thousand, twelve thousand five hundred is going to, is what our reimbursement is in New Jersey. Um, so, um, I think that the financial model we built is probably super accurate now, I can say, based on the fact that we've negotiated those contracted rates in New Jersey, and I'm confident we should be able to do that same in Connecticut. Um, I don't know if Alan wants to add anything to that.
Just from an expense side of things, I think Dr. Garber mentioned the revenue side should be pretty accurate, uh, to slightly conservative. Um, volumes being the driver there from expense side of things. You know, we know what the rent is because we've, you know, obviously looked at the space. Uh, other big line items are payroll, which we know because, you know, we've, we've been in business for, for twenty-plus years. Um, benefits, same sort of thing, uh, consumables, pretty straightforward. Um, so there isn't, there aren't any kind of big line items that, you know, those are, those are the big line items. Um, other than that, we were kind of very thorough, uh, in mimicking kind of our experience, uh, you know, running our practice for twenty years.
And, and when those numbers were, a year ago, we did the application, we really didn't have hard data. Now we own an ASC, now we have contracts, so we can say with confidence that those are pretty accurate financial, uh, models that, that Alan built.
Great, that concludes my questions.
Attorney Feldman, do you have some follow-up questions, um, on, of any of the witnesses based on, um, what our questions were?
No, I do not.
Okay, what I'd like to do now then, I, I'd like to take another break, and, um, and then what we're probably going to have to do is take a larger break, um, because the sign up, and this was based on what we're, our hearings have mostly been going until two, and then we've continued them before we could do public comment, so that's how this agenda was set up. We can't do the public sign up before too because we've noticed the public that it would be at two. Um, but what I'd like to do right now is, uh, take another break, come back at twelve thirty, um, to see if we have any other follow-up questions. Maybe in that time, attorney Feldman, um, talk to Dr. Garber, and maybe you'll be able to come up with some dates. I, I won't do the order until the end of the hearing, but, um, for how long you think it will take to, to get the late files? Because I basically will give you what, what you need. Um, but I will put that in an order at the end of the hearing. Um, so let's, uh, take a break and come back at twelve thirty. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, I just have, uh, one question. Um, Dr. Garber, in this, you know, the service area, where else can you get this procedure done now?
Only in hospitals.
So do all hospitals do that? I don't, you know, is it?
Not, not, not all hospitals. Most hospitals do offer it. Um, but we really pretty much, um, control most of the market in the Fairfield area. Uh, we, we do extensive advertising. I'm sure you might have seen my billboards on ninety-five. Um, and we are the premier practice, uh, the largest practice probably in the, in, in, in the state, definitely. Um, so, eh, we get patients everywhere, but there are many other hospitals that do offer the surgery as well, yes.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I have some follow-up to some of the questions earlier.
Yeah, now, please do.
Um, so as far as the distance we looked up, so Greenwich Hospital is six point two miles away from the center and sixteen-minute drive by regular car, not ambulance. Uh, Stanford Hospital is one point four miles and six minutes, and St. Vincent's is twenty-six point three miles and thirty-four minutes.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, in your late files, um, just put where you got this information, just so we can put it as evidence, what, you know, um, so we can cite to it, um, about the distance and the, and the travel, so that would, that would be helpful. Just, just tell me where you got the information and, and cite it so we can mark it.
No problem, right from Google Maps, we'll, 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 we'll document that. And then one other thing is follow-up as far as the question, as far as how do you know you're cheaper than the hospitals? So I have in front of me an article, uh, from the Ambulatory Surgery Center Association, which I, I think we may be submitted as an exhibit, if not, we can, um, where they document that currently Medicare pays ASCs fifty-eight percent of the amount paid to the hospitals outpatient department performing the same services. For example, Medicare pays hospitals sixteen seventy-four before an outpatient cataract while paying ASCs only nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. So this article documents that CMS in general pays fifty-eight percent of what they would pay a hospital for the same procedure. And in general, I, I think we all know that, or maybe you don't know, most commercial payers follow CMS basically when they determine rates for most procedures of how they reimburse. Um, so I think that's good documentation to support. I mean, we're saying thirty percent, but it's probably more savings based on this article that I have here that, if you don't have, be more than happy to supply. And then the last thing as far as the MBSA QIP, um, updated handbook that was requested, there is a two thousand nineteen version, um, which I submitted to my attorney that she'll, she'll, she'll send you in follow-up, and there is a section two point three that now is specifically labeled Ambulatory Surgery Center Patient and Procedure Selection. The, the, the criteria has not changed from two thousand sixteen, they're the same, but now it's even more clearly labeled that this is for ASC, it used to say low acuity. Um, so we'll submit that as well. And then, and earlier question as far as adverse events, I think I maybe misunderstood the, understood the question a little bit. We really haven't had any adverse events that were, like, reported to the state, reported, um, any, any major things that got reported or anything like that.
And how about outside of Connecticut?
Nowhere have we had any kind of adverse events that get reported to the state or anything like that, no.
And you are in New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh. Jessica and Brian, any follow-up with that?
Uh, no, attorney, and I don't have anything for her.
Neither do I.
Okay, um, you know, Mr. Benson, um, I just want to ask you, uh, you've been, you know, through here, uh, listening to all the, the testimony, um, and I'm, do you have anything, um, you want to add in support to the application?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bajani?
Uh, no, I, I do not, thank you.
I can add one more sentence?
Sure.
Yes, thanks. Um, I, I just think overall, when you consider our application, I think you really need to consider the way medicine's moving nationally, um, and there is a big push nationally from CMS, from the commercial payers, to move cases from the hospital inpatient setting to ASCs for cost savings, and that, and that's the bottom line, it's all because of cost saving. You know, insurance companies, everyone wants to save money. Um, we know that total joints, which was only done in hospitals forever, uh, recently has had a big push, and I think in Connecticut, I think you guys are doing that in ASCs now as well. Um, and I think that's just the way medicine is moving, and I think it's important, um, when considering the application, that that's the way medicine's going, and I think Connecticut should try to stay on the, on the top of that curve with the way, way things are moving. Um, and I think that, uh, we really appreciate everyone's time, and we really appreciate the consideration of our application.
Attorney Feldman, do you have any, uh, questions of the witnesses? No? I'm sorry, you're, I think you're on mute.
No, I do not.
Okay, so I'm going to, um, you know, ask you for a closing statement. I don't know if you prefer to do that now or after public comment. I'll let you pick where, when you want to do that. I mean, we have the time now, or?
Okay, if it would be preferable, let I do it now. I think I'm just going to echo what Dr. Barber has stated, and I can't tell you enough, I'm sure you're forming your own impression. I've been nothing but impressed um, with Dr. Garber and his team, how knowledgeable he is and how invested in providing a low-cost, high-quality service in this state. It's absolutely been refreshing to work with him and hit all the policy points that I believe this office has, uh, held out and emphasized providers when they've been submitting their CON applications. Um, most importantly, this is going to be accessible uh, to all patients, uh, not just, uh, those that are commercially insured. Um, as we stated in our application, uh, Dr. Garber's group will be, uh, connecting with the federally qualified health centers, uh, which provide primarily primary care for Medicaid patients and uninsured patients. And they have a very difficult time getting specialists to see their patients. This is, to me, it very indicative of their true commitment uh, and their service model. Um, that works because they are obviously a profitable organization. Um, I think ultimately they're going to add a lot of value and enhance the health of the community that it serves. Um, they are currently providing inpatient uh, surgery. They're not new to the state. They're at Trinity, St. Francis Medical Center. Uh, they are at St. Vincent's. Uh, neither one of those hospitals has chosen to intervene. They're very supportive of this group, and they're very appreciative of the high-quality work that they provide. Um, I do think that this application is advancing exactly what OHS is looking for by, uh, introducing these high-quality services, and they will be accredited by all the applicable accrediting bodies. Uh, the fact that many of the surgeons that work for Premier or surveyors for these accrediting bodies um, demonstrates that it is, you know, integral to their culture, their values, and how they perform their surgery. Uh, it is a public health problem. It is a good solution. Um, and I think that it will not only be cheaper for Medicaid from the procedural standpoint, but our hope is that the other healthcare-associated costs that result from chronic, uh, morbid obesity will also be reduced. So I think the state will, in fact, benefit from having this procedure available to the patients. Um, so in closing, I just, you know, I can't reemphasize enough that uh, being willing and able, and we are very confident, I, I, we cannot represent to you that DSS has said we're definitely going to do this. But to me, um, as a healthcare attorney, uh, it's a no-brainer. Uh, I can't understand, or, you know, don't expect that DSS will see this as a very safe option for their, for their beneficiaries. So, uh, with that, um, I think, I also thank you for your time, and, um, we'll see you again at, uh, three o'clock.
Just to follow up, uh, attorney Feldman, and this may be in the record, so let me know. You said how the hospitals support this. Just to follow up, Attorney Feldman, and this may be in the record, so let me know. You said how the hospitals support this. Are there letters of support in the application?
There is, there is.
On the hospitals?
From St. Francis Hospital Medical Center.
Okay.
If you would like one from St. V's, we're happy to get one. We just didn't think it was necessary. But they're very, they know exactly, and we're happy to produce it, but they know exactly what we're doing. And they're very supportive of Dr. Garber and his group.
Okay, I mean, I'll leave that up to you. I won't order that you do, but you certainly would be able to do that. It may factor. I don't, I don't know. We're gonna have to take it all in. But I certainly am gonna want to take a look at the St. Francis letter. Jessica and Brian, any follow up with any of the statements or with what Attorney Feldman said?
No.
No, okay. So again, it's, you know, we're not gonna be back on till 3:00 and I, you know, I know that's a long wait. So we don't have a crystal ball. We never know how long these hearings are gonna last. Our last several hearings have gone until 2:00 and we based it on that. So what we, everyone needs to, and I'll just let you know, no one at this point has signed up for public comment. So there, there may not be anyone, which means we'll just be closing it shortly thereafter 3:00. But so we can close or certainly break this technical piece right now, and there may not be any other evidence we need to ask for. And we will see you all at 3:00.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are back from our break. We had public signups from 2:00 to 3:00. This is for those who are just new tuning in. This is the Certificate of Need Public Hearing in the Matter of Premier Bariatric Group, PLLC. This is docket number 21-32425-CON with the applicant looking to establish a, an outpatient surgical facility in Stanford. So we do have one person that has signed up for public comment. For anyone else that's on, on this meeting, we will call the names of the people signed up for public comment, which is at this point just the one. And if anybody wants to speak after that, we will certainly give you the, the opportunity. Speaking time, I'm limiting it to five minutes. We usually do three. But there does not seem to be a lot of people signed up to talk. So if we could limit the time to five minutes, you may get stopped at the end of five minutes. And we strongly encourage anyone, anyone who speaks or anyone who doesn't want to speak, they can submit further written comment to the Office of Health Strategy by email or mail no later than one week from today. So we will keep the record open for public comment for one more week. And again, that can be by email or mail. Our contact information is on our website. And so we can go ahead and continue. The one person who has signed up for public hearing, we have Mariana Morales.
Yes, good afternoon, guys.
Hi, can you put your camera on?
Yes, I'm doing the zoom through my phone, so it's a little bit awkward because our computer doesn't have a camera, but.
Oh, if you can do it through your phone, that would be great. We usually, you know, we like everyone who can, who's speaking to show their face. So you said you're able to do that through your phone?
Yes, I believe so.
Oh, there you are. In and out. There you are. Hello.
Hello.
So you heard my instructions. So if you can limit it to five minutes, I'll let you know when you're, you're about five minutes. But, you know, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
All right, I wrote it down only because I tend to lose my train of thought, so I'm gonna be reading it off my paper. So, hi, my name is Mariana. I'm a patient of New York Bariatric and wanted to share my experience so far. I'm a 21-year-old mother of a two-year-old. My son was the biggest reasoning for undergoing this surgery. At my heaviest, I wasn't able to keep up with my mommy duties such as playing with my son or chasing him around. Something so simple as changing his diaper became a task because of how out of breath I would get just having to bend down to grab wipes and a diaper. My son needed more of me and I needed better for myself. I was 21 with chest tightness, chest pains, and unbearable joint pain. I wasn't living how I was supposed to. I finally made a decision towards a healthy lifestyle. Although I was going to the gym prior, that wasn't enough. It was a constant battle between my mind and my mouth. That's when I found out I was a candidate for the gasket sleeve through New York Bariatric. I was having issues with other facilities due to my insurance being Medicaid. Once you turn 21 on Medicaid, finding a doctor becomes impossible. And I'm speaking from experience on that. I took a leap of faith and started the process towards the surgery. It was an eight-month process for me at the time, but it was the best decision I have made so far. The process was tedious but worth it. The surgery itself was done in a hospital. It was a quick, it was quick and bearable. In fact, I felt so good afterward that I was, that I wish I could have gone home the same day. I went home and had no complications after surgery. I'm currently five months out from my surgery, from my surgery date and feeling better than ever. I'm down 70 pounds, 60 of those pounds which I lost within the first three and a half months. I'm super excited to say that my joint pain is completely gone and I haven't had chest pain or any chest tightness since surgery. Because of Medicaid, my doctor, and New York Bariatrics, I was able to take my life back and give my son the life he deserves. I'm now able to run after him, take him to the park, and spend more time with him opposed to being glued to my bed. And for that, I'm grateful and decided to become a part of New York Bariatric to help everyone undergo this life-changing surgery. And that is all I have for you guys today.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. I will certainly give them serious consideration when looking at the record. I appreciate it. And if there's any more comments, any other comments you want to add, you can certainly put them in writing and send them to us.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Thank you. You can stay on or you can sign off, whatever, whatever you want to do.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Leslie, was there anybody else?
No, we did not have anyone, anyone else stand up.
Okay, all right. Attorney Feldman, anything else?
Nothing. No further comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. And let me just check, Brian and Jess, was there anything else that you wanted to ask or add?
No. I don't have any additional questions. Just the late files.
Okay. Well, thank, I appreciate everyone's time today. And we will certainly take everything, you know, under consideration. The record is going to stay open. The late files, Jess, do you have a list of those?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to make a, could you read us what the, the list is, please?
Sure. The first late file was to review the projected volume tables and the payer mix tables to reflect unduplicated patients. Additionally.
I think Jess, you just went on, on mute, Jess. So, but I think if everybody else could just make sure they're on mute, because I think there was a little bit of feedback, but okay, get back on, Jess, go ahead.
I'm sorry, how far were you able to hear? Or do you want me to just start from the beginning?
I think you can start from the beginning. You had projected volumes and then you sort of cut off while you were sort of breaking that down, but go ahead.
I apologize. Okay. A revision of the projected volume table and payer mix tables to reflect unduplicated patients. Three-year historical year volumes for each hospital where bariatric surgery performed on an inpatient basis. We'd also like the volumes by gender, age group, race, and ethnicity.
And payer type, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, and payer type.
It's okay. I missed that before. Thank you.
The volume and demographics and payer type related to safety and complications and adverse effects events. Excuse me.
Can you restate that, please, Stravall?
Sure, of course. Information on the volume and demographics for the payer type, safety complications, adverse events.
So that, just to be clear, I think, is that the SARS report that from the hospital is what you're looking for, that we get from the third party, that benchmarks the hospital against other payers?
Sorry, I can clarify that. Jess, that one was for the outpatient bariatric surgery facility in New Jersey.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you, Brian. I'm getting static.
Yeah, I think, could everyone else, other than Brian and Jess, mute their mics, because I think we get feedback. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Jess, that was, that was intended for their outpatient surgical facility in New Jersey, which is not operational yet. We'll skip that one.
Okay. The updated standards manual. Both the distance and the time from the proposed ASC to local hospitals. The blended cost of LSG at the ASC.
What do you mean by blended cost?
Not specific to one payer, but, excuse me, a blending of, you know, what someone would pay out of pocket in addition to, you know, an average amongst the payers, et cetera.
If I may, Stravall, I think Dr. Barber had offered to provide this sort of a general range of a number. Okay.
Yep. We also discussed a late file on the complication rate and the SARS report from the hospitals.
So just on that, we, in the break, we did check with the hospitals. We do have St. Vincent's SARS report. St. Francis were relatively new working there. The SARS report for St. Vincent's is for the year of 2020, which we have. We do not have a SARS report available for St. Francis because we just started there within 2021. So that is, we can only produce the St. Vincent's one.
Is that all right? That we're just able to produce St. V's? It's not available at St. Francis?
I think if it's not available and you can't get it, but I mean, the more information we can get, the more it would, you know.
I think we could probably, based on the surgeries that were performed by this particular group, might be, be able to give some anecdotal information as to the extent that they had any sort of adverse outcomes or unanticipated outcomes. Dr. Barber, is that present for St. Francis? You're muted. Muted.
So we can get complication data of any complication. We've had it, not from the third party, but we can get you a list of complications that the hospital documents. But we also just note is St. Vincent's is where we do the majority of our work anyway. So you'll have a good sample size to look at our complication rates with just the St. Vincent's report. St. Francis is a newer institution that we opened the office in Hartford a little over a year ago before we started to do that. So, but we can get you some, some data from the hospital that we can produce as well as the St. Vincent's SARS report. It gives you a good volume that you can look at our complication rates at, which I think would be very helpful to you.
And those were the notations that I made for late files. Brian, did I miss anything that you're aware of?
Just one additional thing, just that Dr. Garber said he had an article from CMS regarding outpatient surgical facility having lower costs that he was gonna share with us.
Yes, it's Ambulatory Surgery Center Association article, which if you don't have, we will get you a copy of this.
That would be great. Thank you, Doctor. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Attorney Feldman, how long do you need?
Well, I do have a question about the second late file, which is a three-year historical data on LSG presumably performed at St. V's. And we'll have one year for St. Francis. Is that data that we could easily get, Dr. Barber? Okay.
Yes, yes, we'll get that. And we're also gonna produce the data for the Westchester Hospital because we think a good portion of those will come over. And then we're gonna produce for Mount Sinai in the city. And we're gonna estimate what percentages we think will come for each one of those hospitals. And we'll break them all out for you. We can get that, we have that readily available. We can get that very quickly.
So to answer your question, Hearing Officer Yandro, we, we would request a week, but to the extent we could submit it sooner, we will.
Okay, great. And just to follow up on what Dr. Garber had to say, you know, on what he's projecting, any other kind of information that could, you know, support the projections that, that people, and we do have Dr. Garber's testimony, but any kind of support that this proposed facility would draw those patients in would be good. We have your, your testimony and I understand what you're, you know, what you, you know, that it's easier, people like the ACS. But if there's any kind of statistics or any kind of, you know, some letters of support that would agree with that would certainly help back up the information you're giving us.
I will try our best. I think that might be hard to come by, but.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I'm leaving that up to you.
Sure. Yeah, I can just tell you from my past experience to do it for 20 years, any patients will go to whatever hospital, patients come to a practice or surgeon, and they'll go any hospital that I tell them to go to, to have the surgery from experience. I used to operate in lots of different places and I moved people from hospital to hospital based on where I can get overtime and people, people will go where we pretty much tell them. But we will, I'll see if I come up with anything, but unlike, I'll be able to come up with anything else besides that.
Okay.
This is Brian Carney. Just, just one further thing, like are there any wait lists or anything backlogs for scheduling, you know, anything like that sort of typically associated with? That would be good to mention if there are.
Sure. Yeah, well, I mean, we usually have a, usually at least a six day week, wait most of the time to get in for surgery, at least. But we'll definitely, we can get you, we can look at historical data of wait times. We definitely have access to that data we can get for you.
Let me just follow that up with a couple of questions. I mean, how many procedures on this AS, on the Ambulatory Surgery Center? How many procedures would you do in a day?
So it depends if we use one room or two rooms, but typically myself, when I, at one point I used to operate at St. Francis on Long Island. I stopped operating right now, so I don't, I haven't operated in a year, but when I should, I should do 10 sleeves in a day. I'd have two operating rooms. I'd bounce back and forth, so you don't have to wait for turnover. So I'd do five cases in each room and I'd be done by 4:00 and start at 7:30 in the morning. So that, that's the best case scenario. My surgeons aren't as fast as I am. So I'd say eight to 10 cases in a day we can easily do at max capacity in the facility with two rooms.
Okay. All right. And so knowing that information and tying it in with whatever kind of information you give us on the backlog would be helpful.
Sure. I, I, I'm confident when we have the facility, there should be no backlog because hospital, we have limited overtime, we have block time. They give us one or two days a week and that's all. We have access to an operating room and sometimes we don't get two rooms, you only get one. So by having access to an ambulatory surgery center, we should be able to do a much larger volume quicker to have unlimited overtime like that.
Okay. Brian, any follow up questions with that?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, you're welcome. So with with the, um, I'm going to issue an order that the documents are going to be provided. Today is the seventh, so, um, right now, I'm going to issue, um, the order that they be provided by next Wednesday, December fifteenth. Attorney Feldman, if you need more time, just file a request in, in, you know, uh, to the portal or to Brian, and I'll get it. You know, just a motion for more time, but look, right now, the order is that these are to be provided by December fifteenth. And we will review those, um, I believe. Brian, when the, um, record closes, is there, um, an official notice that goes out when the record closes?
Um, we'll post it to the portal and we can, we can choose to have, uh, it be accepted so that, you know, they get, they get an email sent out generated on that's been posted.
Okay, so I'm sure once these documents are looked at, there may or may not be a further, you know, request for document, I, you know, until we look at everything, so, but you will get, you will get notified, um, when the record closes. All right, well, I appreciate everybody's time and thank you, everyone, and we will, um, leave the record open, but adjourn the hearing. Okay?
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.